Welcome to the regular briefing session of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners. We have quite a bit to cover on the agenda today. This briefing is for the October 21st meeting, and we have three discussion items. First discussion items will involve Damon Sanders-Pratt. Mr. Pratt, if you'd come forward. According to what my information is, you're going to give us, this is something I've been looking forward to, an update, an expert update on pickleball. Hey, you hear that? And just for that, you've just won a prize. You can go to the beautiful Roatsville Beach for one day.
Mr. Slus trying to pull up my presentation.
Speak loudly because they can't hear you in the back of the room. They want to hear that.
All right. So if you go to the next slide. So during your budget deliberations in the spring, a request was made somewhat informally, no, a request was made somewhat informally to provide funding for dedicated pickleball courts. So today, there's a number of shared use courts that are Forsyth County courts. I think it's 10. But there was a request for, to not have shared use courts. And so you can see, this is actually from your budget document. The third item is where the board asked staff to look into the possibility of modifying or adding facilities at county parks. This next slide basically just kind of talks about the level of play. This comes from some literature from the United States Association of Pickleball Players. And it notes that there are 4.2 million players nationally in 2020, which was about a 20% growth from the prior year. And that equates to 2.8 million casual players, people who play one to seven times, somewhat less frequently, and then core players who play eight or more times a year. This next slide gives you an example of some communities that have created dedicated pickleball courts. In parentheses, I put the number of those dedicated courts. If we could find out what, how many there actually were. So the park staff and going online, I was able to find out some particulars. But some of these other places also have dedicated courts. I just couldn't find out exactly how many. So you can see there's Greensboro and High Point, and then Mount Airy, and Statesville, and Wilkes-Barre, and other communities surrounding Forsyth County. So this is the status of the county's parks. So this is all the county's parks listed. The ones with asterisks next to them actually have tennis courts already. And so the number in the parentheses is the number of tennis courts at those particular facilities. So Joni Moser's, there's two tennis courts, and then we've lined those tennis courts so that there are four pickleball courts. So it's like a shared use. Walker Town, there's three tennis courts. They're lined for three pickleball courts. And then you can see Union Cross also has three tennis courts lined for three pickleball courts. And then Tanglewood has 10 courts, six clay and four hard courts, and none of those at this time are lined for pickleball. So it's a total of 18 tennis courts in Forsyth County, and then at the bottom are the other county parks that don't have tennis facilities. And then, so in addition to the county's 18 tennis courts, I just noted the city of Winston-Salem also has 112 tennis courts also. So the park staff had an opportunity to talk to and to email with representatives of pickleball association here locally, the ambassador here locally, as well as some players to meet them out at Joni Moser, and I think at Tanglewood once, to talk to them about what some of their interests were. And some of the key ones were that they wanted dedicated pickleball courts. And why they wanted that was that when they have shared use courts, there are multiple lines. So it's like, almost like spaghetti sometimes on the court, it appears. If you have basketball, tennis, and pickleball, just different colored lines. There's competing uses. So, you know, when they want to play, sometimes there's tennis players already on there, or tennis players waiting to play. So there's competing uses for the same facilities. And then on the courts where we have three, so we have three tennis courts and three pickleball courts, they're oriented the same way as the tennis court. So the net is the same net that they use for tennis, which is too high for pickleball. So they are basically having to play with a net that's too high. They were interested in courts in western Forsyth County in particular, although they weren't adverse to them other places. They wanted an open first come, first served courts arrangement versus paid programming like we have at Tanglewood Park. And they have had some conversations with the owner of Flex Tennis there. And then indoor versus outdoor, they have been playing indoors. There are many particularly casual players who have learned to kind of like the outdoor option. It's particularly safe now, and the price is right. All right. So these are the existing and some planned public pickleball courts in Forsyth County. So Forsyth County has 10, as I noted. So at Joni Moser, there's four, Walker Town, three, Union Cross, three. The city of Winston-Salem has 24 shared use pickleball courts, just like ours are shared use. So there are already tennis courts, and they're lined for pickleball as well. And so that's at the Anderson Center, Oldtown Park, Granville Park, Polo Park, and Georgia Taylor. They have a total of 24 at the city. And then they are planning to build three dedicated pickleball courts at Haynes Park. And then town of Kernersville, we learned at the Fourth of July Park, has two shared use pickleball courts, and they are planning to have four more on their existing two tennis courts. And then they also recently received a grant from the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund to build three dedicated pickleball courts that would just be for pickleball. So now there are going to be some options that the board could consider. What the staff focused on was Joni Moser Park, because it was in the right area, you know, it was in western Forsyth County. Now, Tanglewood also was in western Forsyth County, but there's the paid arrangement with our vendor there, and it would seem almost like disparate treatment to the tennis players to have a similar racket sport right next to it, and they weren't paying, paying, rather, in a first come, first served basis. So we focused on Joni Moser. But you also have a handout that I left in your offices that talks about some other options at Tanglewood or Horizons Park. That's right, that Mr. Plyler has. So right now, to line existing courts to where you can have a configuration of two pickleball courts per tennis court. So on each half of the tennis court, you'd have a full pickleball court. That would be $500 to paint the pickleball court onto the tennis court, and then fencing in between pickleball courts, if they're back to back, it'd be another $500 or so. And generally, participants have been bringing their own nets to play pickleball in that arrangement. So if you're playing on half of a tennis court, there is no net in between the tennis court halves. So they bring their own net so they can play. This is an example of a pickleball court placed on a tennis court, the same orientation as the tennis court. So you can see that the pickleball court's a little smaller. It's in blue. But then the net, which is locked in place at Forsyth County, is a tennis court height. So it's a little bit high for pickleball. This is an example that was taken at Joni Moser on, I believe it was Tuesday, where on half of a tennis court at Joni Moser, they have an entire pickleball court. And then they brought their own net, which you can see in the middle there, which is a net that the player's actually brought to play on that's regulation height. So these are some examples of costs that have been gathered by staff, just estimates of what it would cost to add dedicated pickleball courts at Joni Moser. So to convert two tennis courts that are there into six pickleball courts is basically a cost of $30,000, $91,900. And that big delta is the $60,000 primarily because there's some damage to the asphalt base. Now, that could, you know, remain as it is. It's just that they periodically have to repair it. So we didn't know how much money, if you wanted this option, the board would want to spend to put a new surface on top of a base that needs some work. So this is what that would look like. The current orientation of the tennis courts is the same as what you see here, but if the two tennis courts are removed, then they could fit three courts in that same space on each half. So you got six total. And then you can see on the north of this picture, there's a grassy area and also a basketball court. So on this alternative at Joni Moser, if you wanted to enable six courts, that would get rid of the two tennis courts, and then the six courts would be oriented this way with a five-foot fence in between them. Second alternative at Joni Moser, which would enable nine courts, is to do what you just saw, which created six, and then to take that basketball court, the half-court basketball court, and the grassy area that were to the north of it in the picture, and also surface those for pickleball as well. And so that adds, you know, some cost to the projects. That would go from $113,100. And then again, to fix that sub-base is another $60,000, thereabouts. So it'd be up to $173,000 to create nine pickleball courts at Joni Moser. So this is a picture looking from the half-court basketball court toward the tennis courts. We can see players playing pickleball on the left there. That whole area would be reclaimed, the base fixed, resurfaced for nine pickleball courts, whereas today, you have two tennis courts, and then the one half-court basketball court. And you can see just off to the right, perhaps, from the half-court basketball court, the grassy area that would also be reclaimed for one of the nine pickleball courts. So this is what that configuration would look like. So the half-court basketball court, the grassy area are gone. You can see the, those six pickleball courts that you saw in the earlier rendition in the first alternative, and they just added another three to the north of that in the picture. This is an example from another community that has multiple pickleball courts in the same fenced facility. Now, they don't actually have a five-foot fence that's behind the baseline of each court, but that would be the preferred way to play. So these are all the alternatives together, so you can compare them, just looking at them all on the same sheet. The kind of less expensive way, which is what we've kind of done, to put a toe into providing pickleball facilities in shared use at all of our county parks that have tennis courts. Then you can see, again, to convert two tennis courts at Joni Moser into six pickleball courts is from $30,000 to $90,000. And then to convert those two tennis courts, as well as the half-court basketball court and the grassy area at Joni Moser, and have nine pickleball courts, would give you a cost that could be up to $173,000. And now, if you do either the options, one or two, to replace the pickleball courts, or replace the tennis courts, rather, with pickleball courts, then you're going to reduce the inventory of tennis courts that the county has from 18 to 16. And that's what I have. You have a presentation, again, that I handed to you that talks about some other options as well. So I know there's some people here from the Pickleball Association, the park staff is here, and I can try and field any questions if you have any right now.
Well, let's say that little David and his friend decide they want to go out and play tennis today. But Big Ted and his wife Rita decide they want to play pickleball. And they are out there, and all of a sudden, they see several kids coming up with their basketball. Somewhere, they're going to find a basket. Question is, who gets to play?
So there's an hour time limit, in theory, on the courts. So, you know, you get to play for an hour, then you're supposed to relinquish it to somebody else to play for an hour. Now, if nobody's waiting, people continue to play. Now, the basketball court right now, if you chose the option to not replace the basketball court, well, that would still be there. So you have six pickleball courts, and the basketball court would remain. And then there are other, you know, we have another full court at Union Cross and at Tanglewood.
When do you think we'll build pickleball courts specifically and only for pickleball people? Would that ever happen?
Well, so it has happened, not in Forsyth County. Not Forsyth County hasn't done that, which is sort of the ask. So we're just presenting you options, and if you direct us to look at a way to do that, because right now it's not funded, we would investigate that further and bring something back.
Sure, yeah. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Sanders-Pratt?
A couple. And refresh my memory. I've been to Joni Moser once, up to where the courts are, and actually played pickleball there. But when you come into the park, there's a part on the lower level, and to tell you the truth, it's parking, but I didn't pay much attention to what's out. Is this some green space? I can't remember what exactly what is on the lower part at...
So when you come into the park, and you start heading toward the tennis courts, and then you mean like, you make that left before you get to the tennis courts?
Yeah, well, there's a, yeah, there's an area there, and there is a left. And then you go up a hill, and there's a parking lot up for the, where the tennis courts are. So tell me more, what's, once you turn into the park and turn right, and you start going, and then you go up a little hill to the parking spot. So what's kind of in that spot on the lower level, I think?
You're getting a little help from the park.
Good afternoon. So as you come into the park, on the left's the softball, baseball field, and then that's what's there on that section. And that was partly funded years ago by Southwest Little League, so.
I got it. I just couldn't remember what was there exactly. It's awful.
Additional questions or comments?
One question, Mr. German. Sir. Damon, for the conversion of the six pickleball courts at that location, if the demand gets stronger, and stronger, and stronger, what would be the cost of adding those three additional pickleball courts down the line in the future?
Sure. So in the summary, on the last page there, so, you know, if we fixed it and repaired the sub-base, right, for the six, that's $90,000. So it'd basically be another $40,000. Well, I'll take that back, take that back, another $80,000, $80,000. Because you're basically taking out some site work. So you're removing some trees. It's going to be some grading. You got to put in a base that doesn't exist right now. So really, the difference between the $91,900 and the $173,000.
Okay. So rough. Any idea how often the basketball courts have been used in that facility now?
I don't. When I was out there, nobody was out there, but I don't.
Okay. You know, I was thinking, while you were talking, I didn't even know there's such a thing as pickleball until about a month ago, when Don Martin said, "This is one of the most exciting games I've ever played." I says, "Is it like basketball?" He said, "No." So it's new to me. And then we got a studio audience out here, and half of the room in here loves to play pickleball, right, folks? So it sounds to me like we're heading like a California fire for more pickleball in Forsyth County. And I think that's probably a great idea. It's just a matter of getting it done and spending money. It's only taxpayers' money, you know. So we have a hand back there. Would you like to come up and join Damon Sanders-Pratt for a minute? Or are you just saying you like the idea of pickleball?
Just to give you an idea, you have a little membership out at Joni Moser Park, and we now have 195 members at Joni Moser. Give an idea of the scope and the interest of the business. So nine courts, goodness gracious, but that's, please, at minimum.
Go right ahead, Commissioner Kaplan.
Have y'all contacted the city of Lewisville? They're building that community center right across the street. They've got some land. Have you made an effort with them to have courts? No? Okay. Thank you.
Well, you planted a seed, Ted. Very well could happen this afternoon. Who knows?
Yeah, it would seem to me that they're on that site, if there was really a demand for basketball, there'd be room to put that somewhere else if you wanted to.
And the park has noted that it could be moved.
It would be, but, and while I do appreciate the Commissioner Alamon's idea of doing six and wait, but to tell you the truth, if you did all the work at one time and did nine, boom, and that would probably, if you really think about it, I could see all those, if you fill them all with four people playing, which a lot of times people are playing doubles, you're looking at 36 people playing, basically compared at max on the tennis court, if you're playing doubles, it's only eight, plus ever who might be playing, shooting some baskets or something. So it's a lot, it's a lot of use for a lot of people that I think would be pretty well utilized. And from, I know we didn't budget these kind of dollars, but by the time you got a plan together and got going, whatever else, we'd be approaching the next budget year that could finish it, to get it going, you know, to do it. But and we really haven't heard, it's been, I don't know how widely the discussion's been, but there was, there was not anybody playing tennis, and there are no tennis pictures, and yours doesn't seem to be a lot of tennis activity there. And there really are a lot of tennis courts.
If you include the counties, the cities, and Kernersville, there are a number of tennis courts in the community.
Not as convenient, depending, because they're, I got to admit, in that area, I don't know where the closest tennis court is from there.
You mentioned pickles. Makes me think of Jenny Fulton, who was the vice mayor, Mayor Pro Tem of Kernersville, better known as the Pickle Lady. Remember, she sold pickles, made pickles, started out at the YMCA. Maybe you could get, you know, a symbol, you know, when you see, what a basketball, you think of basketball. If you see a pickle, you think of pickleball. Could have a, have a little guy holding up, having muscles, holding a giant dill pickle. What do you think?
I don't think that's a good idea.
I didn't mean to interrupt. All right. Are you finished, or did you want to go a little more?
I am.
Okay. Thanks. That's been a good, good report, Damon. We have, you got a rousing obsession, ovation. Next, we have Joshua Swift, Josiah Swift, ready to give us an update on COVID-19, COVID-19 pandemic, a disease. And if you're ready, we're ready, Mr. Smith. Now, it's when we need the jingle. You're already standing up. I didn't even see you coming up, my colleague. First time I've seen you living color in a long time.
Yes, it's been a while. So good. Will you advance it, or? Okay, great. Thank you, Ashley. So, good afternoon, commissioners, given the update in person today. So I will, where we are today, we had 133 cases of COVID-19, so 1,539 cases over the past 14 days. Average cases per day is now 110. So that's well below where we were at our peak around late August, early September, when we were over 200 plus per day. Percent positivity is 8.2% below our high of almost 15% several weeks ago. Your gold standard is to get below 5%. You can also see our total deaths since the beginning of the pandemic is 539, and our deaths since September 1st is 79. There was a study that came out, I shared it last week, that across the U.S., since the pandemic started, one in 500 children have been orphaned, either they've lost a parent or a grandparent that cares for them. We are not that high rate in Forsyth County, or we don't have statistics to show that, but this show the enormity of the amount of people that have passed in the United States since the start of the pandemic. So this next slide looks at our cases per week. You can see we hit a high of... You can see we hit a high of fourteen hundred and ninety-six cases, almost fifteen hundred several weeks ago, late August. You can see now our latest numbers, we're at seven hundred and twenty-five, so that's a fifty percent reduction of our number of cases from our peak in late August. And basically, our numbers now are where we were in mid to late February of this year. So that's, we had our peak, if you remember, and highest was in December and January for our highest month, highest month was actually December twenty-twenty for the number of cases, but we got very close through August and the first, in September in that stretch. Next slide, please. So this next slide looks at our percent positivity. Again, as you can see, we got up to fourteen percent, we stayed there for two weeks, and we dipped down to twelve percent, and now it seems like we're leveling off at a little over nine percent as our weekly average. Next, I'll look at our vaccination rates. You can see this is the rate I show you each week, broken down by race and by age. Each year, these numbers continue to go up little by little, especially as we focus on our historically marginalized populations, and really focus hard on our twelve to seventeen year olds and our eighteen to twenty-four year olds. So those numbers are going up as far as the partially vaccinated, and we hope the fully vaccinated. Reminder that the gift cards that were so successful, over thirty thousand gift cards were issued in Forsyth County through the state's program. Those were for first doses only, that was per the state and federal requirements, but we're seeing a lot of people that are coming back. And basically, this is the trend we're seeing across the state when you look at partially vaccinated versus fully vaccinated by county, it's about that four to five percent difference. And so we're no different in Forsyth. For adults only, eighteen and older, seventy-two percent are partially vaccinated, so that was a goal we set way back in May, was to hit seventy percent by November, excuse me, by September the first. We didn't hit September the first, it was later in the month, but now we've surpassed it to seventy-two percent, and over two-thirds of Forsyth County adults are fully vaccinated. A question that Vice Chairman Martin had last week was about our twelve years and up, that's everyone that's now eligible for the vaccine. For Forsyth County, sixty-five percent of individuals twelve and up are fully vaccinated, that's sixty-five percent compared to the state's rate of sixty-three percent. And partially vaccinated, the number is sixty-nine percent compared to sixty-eight across the state. And I'll move just another comparison for the next slide, please, just to show where we are in comparison to the state and neighboring counties. You can see we're at sixty-seven percent of adults who are fully vaccinated, and you can see where we compare, we're one percentage point above, beyond Guilford, and we're two percentage points above the state rate. Two last slides. You know about the booster doses, people are now eligible for the Pfizer booster dose if they meet the qualifications, if you're sixty-five years of age or older, or you meet the criteria of if you're eighteen or older and meet the below criteria, this is basically based on where you live, if you're in a group setting, how you, where you work, if you're around a large amount of people, or if you're in high-risk professions. The next slide, my last slide, is about our future. So I will say for the Pfizer doses that we've had now for several weeks, we're only seeing at Department of Public Health around a hundred or so people per day that are coming through for their Pfizer booster doses. But we are anticipating the FDA, we know that today and tomorrow, they're having discussions about Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson, about the booster for that. They're meeting, like I said, today and tomorrow, the CDC is supposed to meet later, late next week for final discussions and recommendations about what to do, so probably it'll be late October before we could possibly give boosters for those doses for Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson. And the other one is five to eleven-year-olds. Pfizer, there's an FDA review for Pfizer for five to eleven-year-olds that's going to occur the twenty-sixth of October ASAP, that's the CDC's Immunization Practices Committee, they're going to be meeting on the second and third of November. We're anticipating that, we know there's thirty-five thousand plus individuals in Forsyth County that are in that five to eleven-year-old age frame, age range. We anticipate around sixty percent of individuals in that population, which is twenty thousand, getting vaccinated. That's based on, the state is projecting fifty-eight percent, we've seen sixty-six, sixty-seven percent of adults get it, so look, somewhere in the middle there, we're at about twenty thousand. We're working with the school system and looking to, you know, making plans. We know there's a lot of options, just like we've seen, haven't seen much of a bump with the boosters for Pfizer. Last time, if you remember, it was early, late May, I believe, or early May, we had the twelve to seventeen-year-olds. When they became eligible, we saw a slight bump for about two weeks in individuals coming to get the vaccine, and then it leveled off. So that's some of my presentation, be happy to take any questions.
If the school system has a complete student body in the building, and they call you and say, "Could we get y'all to come over and give some shots to the five to eleven-year-old", could you do that, or would you?
Well, we would, we're trying to not do that, just because of, with that population, that age, they would like to have a parent or guardian present. Some of it's for the liability and just for the logistics.
Does that take a written permission report from the parent?
Yeah, they have to get a written permission, and we did that working with the school systems before, when we went into the middle schools and the high schools. But that population could have the slip, take it to the school nurse, take it to the school system, and they could get the vaccine and didn't have to have someone with them. This population, you know, and depending on the size of the child, they might not be able to get it in the shoulder, it may have to be in the thigh, so it's best that we have a parent or guardian there. And we've already, we were, just had meetings yesterday and had, been having discussions for several weeks.
What are the legitimate reasons if a parent doesn't want his or her child vaccinated?
What are the reasons why they wouldn't?
Legitimate, yeah.
Well, I mean, I can't really, I mean, obviously, there's lots of opinions about the vaccine.
That's the reason I asked the question.
I mean, we've seen, obviously, I mean, even if you just look at the adults, how COVID, the hospitalizations that have went down, and how it's primarily people that are unvaccinated, same with the deaths and people in ICU. You know, if I, my child, I have two, one's in high school vaccinated, and one is in elementary school, and when that's available, we're going to get the vaccine, just because it's a high-risk environment. And, you know, I worry about his grandparents who are vaccinated, but we see breakthrough cases, so it's about not only protecting that kid, but those that the kid comes in contact.
Commissioners, do you have questions or comments for Mr. Swift?
Two questions, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, first of all, Mr. Swift, for always a comprehensive report. In the front page today, there was a story about some clusters in some of our school systems, which, not school system, but schools specifically. Would you just explain the process of what happens once the schools are designated as a cluster site? What happens next, you know, one, two, three kind of format?
Yeah, I mean, so we do, we have, I can't, I don't remember the exact number, we had a meeting yesterday, I think it's six or seven schools. Usually, what'll happen, what we're seeing is primarily, this will happen in like a sports team, or a band, or in a certain classroom. So what we do is we do contact tracing and case investigation, where you identify the cases, and then you identify those close contacts, and when you're in a setting like that, I believe the number, exact number is five or more. So that is identified as a cluster. We're working with the school systems to try to put in place practices to prevent further spread. So our school system, the school system has been great to work with, Ms. McManus and her team, Jan Atkinson, we're working with them, communicating every day, and then our school nurses and that staff, and the communicative staff are in constant communication.
And just as a follow-up, are you receiving much resistance from those parents who contacted their kid, might have been potentially impacted, you know, by your tracing analysis? Any pushback at all from parents, a lot of kids to be vaccinated once that's done? At this point, are they pretty cooperative?
For the most part, they're cooperative, but anytime you're dealing with the public, there's going to be some people that aren't happy about the situation.
Okay. And finally, I want to commend you on increasing the percentage of African-Americans being vaccinated, but I'm concerned about that, sixty percent not being vaccinated, or at least twenty-nine percent to get it up to seventy percent. And I know you're working every weekend, and your staff's trying to make an impact on that, so whatever I can do to assist you on that, please let me know, because we've got to get that number up a little higher. And some, not hook a crook, but some legal means.
Yeah, I mean, it's, thank you, Commissioner Alamein, I mean, we're trying to be in the community, we were, I know this past Saturday, we were at the Southeastern Neighborhood Association, we were at the Enterprise Center, we've been there countless times, going out into the community, and obviously, the gift cards were a hit, we saw a lot of participation this past week when we were at that event, we had, I think, eight people came through to get the vaccine, we were there at least two and a half, three hours, I was out there. Earlier, you know, we've been at the fairgrounds, we were there three times, this last time, I think it was fifteen or twenty people, so it's, you know, when we set up an event, you know, you have to plan to be able to reach a lot of people, and we could easily in a two or three hour with even a small team, give fifty, sixty, seventy doses of vaccine. It's just, we need the people to come. So we're making progress, but we still got to keep pushing.
Just a quick follow-up on Commissioner Alamein's question to the school district. So when you, when you do contact tracing in those situations, are kids staying out fourteen days, ten days? Is the number of days out been adjusted? I've heard a couple.
It has been adjusted, but it also depends on if the child was, you know, now the strong schools toolkit has been adjusted, where if both children, both children have masks, there doesn't have to be the quarantine. So that has, there has been, if they're close contact. If they have COVID, obviously, they have to be out, but if they're a close contact, but they were mask on mask, then they're fine.
So no, no quarantining for the, for those picked up in contract tracing if they're wearing masks? Okay, thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Good report, thanks for coming over, and how's your staff standing up? I mean, it's, as Commissioner Kaplan mentioned a moment ago, you guys are working seven days a week, twenty-four seven practically.
Well, it's, Chairman, thank you for asking, and since you asked, I mean, it's, it's been tough, it's nineteen months now, they, our vacancy rate is quite high, the staff are, you know, very tired, I mean, it's, I think the struggle is being like with our school nurses, you know, it's, even without COVID, it's a very demanding job, and now some school nurses, I just got a resignation today, in a resignation letter, she said, "I have six schools to cover." I can't do it. Talking with our clinic staff today, and, you know, with several vacancies and trying to, you know, meet the demand for children for their back-to-school vaccinations and meeting that, so it's, it's a tough time, and if you talk to Novant, or you talk to Atrium, I mean, they're having, it's a struggle, especially for clinical staff, but it's, yeah, you know, it's welcome news for the premium pay, but it's just, it's different, the recruitment and retention is very, it's a struggle.
Well, thanks for sticking with it, we're behind you, thank you very much.
Can I ask one follow-up question?
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
Ballpark figure Joshua, how many more people do you need to have a fully staff operation?
We are at about a little over twenty, twenty-five percent vacancy rate.
Twenty, twenty-five percent.
So when you look at, I don't have the nursing numbers right on the top of my, it's even higher if you look, when we drill down into certain areas, and some of those areas like clinical, obviously, that affects our ability, you know, we have been fortunate to have National Guard support and some state support, but that's going away, December third, the National Guard's going away, and again, you still have clinics that are running, school nursing positions. Another one that I would mention is our environmental health, which that, you know, we have several positions that are vacant in food and lodging, which affects our ability, you know, restaurant inspections, but also our on-site wastewater, which affects a backlog for septic permits and well permits. So, yeah, we can get those numbers as far as the vacancies.
Thank you. What was it, the old country song said, "You got a tiger by the tail, it's plain to see." Thank you, appreciate everything, Mr. Swift. Off we go into the wild blue yonder, I'm being an old Air Force guy, happy to introduce Mark Davidson, who's coming in to talk about the airplane donation. And by the way, I think we're going to dedicate the Forsyth Technical Institute's big new aviation facility next week, is that right?
Twenty-six, October twenty-sixth.
Twenty-six, right around the corner.
We're actually going to have two ribbon cuttings at the airport, one for the Piedmont Advantage Credit Union ATM, be nine-thirty, all are invited. So it's an exciting day at the airport. My name's Mark Davidson, Airport Director, avid pickleball player. Can't believe my deeps left me, I thought they'd stick around for my presentation, but they veiled on me.
Well, what do you think about having a pickle as a logo, you know?
I love it. If y'all recall, the county has an opportunity to own a vintage airplane that is the same year, make, and model as the Savoya Marquetti S-56, as Z. Smith flew from London to Hong Kong to meet his Broadway bride, Libby Holman. The Renata House would like to gift it to the county since the loan agreement with the Carolina Air Museum at Charlotte Douglas Airport has expired. And if you recall during my last presentation last month, I mentioned some concerns about the size of the aircraft and the size of the existing terminal lobby. The original idea was to hang the aircraft from the ceiling. Since we're in the process of renovating the terminal, we asked the design team, which included Walter Robb, architects, and C. Design, to make a determination whether the aircraft would fit in the lobby using all the dimensions they've been gathering electronically, along with the dimensions of the aircraft. So these couple slides here, there's the aircraft, you can see the Savoya Marquetti, and then that's the main lobby, the dimensions, and if, Ashley, if you just want to scroll to the next one, it's pretty cool, the equipment they used to measure, we didn't have any good blueprints for the terminal building since it was built in forty-one, they were able to use this equipment, come through the airport, the several days of gathering all this information for dimensions, and it's really coming in handy for things like this. You can see different side cuts of the aircraft, and it fits, I should have never doubted, Commissioner Kaplan, he was on, he was on it, one of the slides, I don't know if it's on this one or the next one, is it show the, oh, no, that was the original one, go back one, you can see the ten feet in the right, upper right-hand corner, the clearance between people, or the ceiling, or I'm sorry, the bottom of the aircraft and the floor would have about ten feet, so plenty of clearance there. And plus, the idea is to tear down that departure lounge, the existing departure lounge, and so you could actually see through the glass, one of the, you know, these are preliminary designs of the terminal, I think it would be pretty amazing, you could see the aircraft from the airside through the glass of the terminal. And so you can go ahead and go to the next one if you want, you can see some other cuts of it, that one in the upper left-hand corner is looking, you know, if you go up to our offices, looking out over that, what is that called? That banner, or that, what is that called, right up there? Where's my architect? He's on, we had some technical difficulties, Gary Beal's on the line, but he's unable to speak, but you can see there, you can see it from the second floor there, that cut. I think this is a discussion I had been today, and if the board wants to proceed with this, I'd bring a resolution to accept the donation. If you remember, the estimated value of the aircraft's about a hundred and twenty-five thousand, currently insured by the Renata House for a hundred and fifty thousand. A Renata House requests the county to pay for shipping and handling not to exceed ten thousand, and they require it to be on display in the future and would provide additional plaques, and I think Mr. Kaplan mentioned about lighting, how we could spotlight it and make it look amazing. I'm here to answer, I'll try to answer any questions.
Start with Commissioner Kaplan.
Okay.
Any questions?
No, I, thank you, Mark, for getting all that done, this is going to be awesome, it'll be, I put this airplane on the internet to find out more about it, and actually, there's only three left, I think.
I heard two.
You heard two, I heard three. And at auctions, it's been bringing around a hundred thousand dollars, so it's a nice gift to the county, it fits, I hope the board will support it. The ten thousand is to move it here, store it, and I think, are they going to reassemble it as well?
I believe they're going to help us with that. They're the experts, and we don't want to touch it without their assistance.
And then they're also going to do some dimensional, three or two, don't know which dimension it will be, of information about the plane that will attach to the wall so that people could learn about it when they go in and see it. And I just think it's a great asset, and I hope the board will support it.
Additional comments or questions?
I really like it, really glad it fits.
Mark, you did a good job.
One question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mark, did I hear you say the terminal was built in nineteen forty-one?
That's what it was dedicated, yes, sir. It was added on and through the years, you know, it was one of the fastest, it was the busiest airport in North Carolina during certain years in the sixties, and they just added on, never really sticking to the original architecture, and so that's the idea with this renovation that we're going to do, is make it look like it did, but some modern attributes and cool features.
Been a history, but I applaud the idea, and hopefully we can include our friend, Jim Shaw's pitching our authority eventually.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark, appreciate it. Now, Chantel Robinson, Deputy County Manager, with a report, Cure Violence Update. Is that what I think it is?
It is, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, Board. So today, I'm going to provide a brief overview of our Cure Violence Initiative that we are working on. This is a partnership with Forsyth County, the City of Winston-Salem, and other partner agencies to address community violence. You can go to the next slide. We are engaging the community throughout the process, there is a steering committee that's meeting weekly, and that committee is to provide guidance, coordination, and accountability. coordination, and accountability of the process. And on this slide, you can see a list of our steering committee members. We are starting to meet on a weekly basis throughout the assessment process. So, the Cure Violence approach, it's an evidence-based model that stops the spread of violence by using methods and strategies associated with disease control. So, essentially, it uses a public health model. It uses a targeted approach and identifies specific areas of the community by evaluating crime and incident data. And so, when we say we are trying to reduce gun gang violence, it's not like they are going to be able to tackle the entire city of Winston-Salem. It really will be targeted to specific areas that has increased gun gang violence in it. And through this model, they do, they detect and interrupt conflict by using trained violence interrupters and outreach workers. And these are members of our own community that does the work, boots on the ground. They identify and treat the highest-risk individuals, again, using trained culturally appropriate outreach workers, individuals from the community with lived experience to really try to connect with individuals that we are trying to serve. And then, they're also trying to change social norms by engaging leaders in the community, residents, local business owners, faith leaders, service providers, basically having a unified message that we are tired of violence and do not support it in our community. And so, there are assessment phases. We're currently contracting with Cure Violence Global. We're in Phase 1, and right now, they are in the process of conducting Cure Violence 101 presentations. And I know some of you were able to join yesterday. We had two sessions yesterday, one at 3:00 with local officials and one at 6:00 with community organizations, and both were very well-attended, and so, we're pleased with that. Our next one is October 19th. We've invited additional community organizations and faith leaders to that. And this is really to ensure that the community fully understands what the Cure Violence model is all about. We need and want their support in order to make this work. We're also working on scheduling Cure Violence 101 presentations with the hospitals. They are part of our steering committee, but part of this model could potentially include hospital-based intervention strategies as well. So, we are exploring that. And then, more presentations will be scheduled as needed. So, if other individuals are identified, if we accidentally miss anyone, it is certainly not intentional. We are trying to invite anyone and everyone who's interested in learning about this work. And then, Phase 2, Cure Violence staff will meet more individually, smaller groups with key stakeholders, again, to learn more from them about challenges in our community. And then, they will visit, they will come onsite to visit with various individuals, community groups, potential workers. And then, we do plan to receive a report from them by the end of November, if everything stays on track. And that report will provide us with a proposed budget and proposed action plan that would then be presented to our elected officials. Next slide, please. And so, after the assessment is complete, they will provide us with recommendations. As I stated, they will be provided to you, as well as the City of Winston-Salem's elected officials. You know, while this is an evidence-based model, the dynamics of each community is different, and they will ensure that their recommendations align with the needs of our community as they're learning more about us. If you all approve this, then we would issue a request for proposals for organizations to apply. We know that some organizations have already applied through the ARPA process. However, because the assessment is not finished, no decisions have been made regarding community organizations or individuals that may be funded to implement the model. Because a request for proposals will be tailored based on the recommendations that we receive from the assessment. And so, it's really hard to determine what is needed until the assessment is complete. I also want to note that both the county and the City of Winston-Salem has set aside some funds to implement Cure Violence if it's recommended. This board did provide us with $400,000 in this year's budget for gun gang violence initiatives. We've expended about $50,000 of that through the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, one for a program through Parenting Path, and then $10,000 for this Cure Violence assessment. It is certainly possible and probably highly likely that we will need additional funds through the ARPA process in order to complete the pilot program. In other jurisdictions that have implemented Cure Violence, it has typically cost about $400,000 to $500,000 to implement for a specific target areas per year. The city has set aside $200,000 of ARPA funds specifically for Cure Violence, and that is part of their $1.35 million crime prevention plan. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments for Ms. Chantel?
I have one. I thought the presentation was excellent yesterday, and one of the phrases they used several times was sort of staying in their lane, which I understood the importance. They're not into law enforcement, they're not into this, not into that. And they basically, their implementers make referrals, and they're connecting to other support agencies. And I'm kind of curious in the places, kind of thought of this afterwards yesterday, in the, like Durham, where I think they've been for three years, if I remember right. It appears, I mean, I'm kind of curious whether the existing referral agencies in Durham were kind of adequate to handle the referrals they sent to them. So, I'm kind of curious if you had a... When you talk about the overall kind of... And maybe this assessment will tell us that partly, is that do we have the types of nonprofits and/or, you know, government-operated facilities and staff and support areas that will be able to handle the recommend... The referrals that they're going to make, particularly, I mean, behavioral health's a big issue, and I guess I'm kind of curious about partners, and they're going to represent all their agencies because they're going to, it looks to me like, key agencies for which referrals will be made. And I guess maybe they need to be in since, you know, they're not on boards yet. It would be great if some partners, you know, either some of the... Some of the partners of partners, some of the contractors of partners, and I didn't, on that list, I wouldn't glance in that and get for that purpose, but are there people like, that are on those Daymark folks and others that are on that list? Because I didn't read all that, and I've seen it before, but I wasn't looking for that particularly.
Yep. So, that particular list is just the steering committee, but we certainly will be engaging with various organizations. We had not invited partners yet, but that's certainly something that we need to do. In terms of the resources, I can get with Durham County because they have helped us throughout this process to find out kind of the adequateness of the programs, as well as Charlotte Mecklenburg is in their first year of implementation. But what I will say is, we know that this will complement the various programs. One, we already have through the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Also know that we are assessing all of the programs of JCPC to determine whether they are effective. And so, you know, we have almost a million dollars of just for juvenile crime prevention through the council, so we will be evaluating that closely. We do also provide behavioral health funds through our MOE dollars for counseling specifically. So, this board just approved to fund Cross-Nor for the Center for Trauma Resiliency, for trauma-informed therapy through the schools. This board also funds the School Health Alliance, which provides counseling in the schools. And so, we will continue to monitor the behavioral health funds, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, and certainly will work with partners as they come into our community as well.
Thank you. Additional questions?
I have a question, but just a comment, Mr. Chairman. I mentioned this earlier, but I used to work in Chicago. That's where I first started my teaching career, 1974 to 1976, at a place called Christian Action Academy, an alternative dropout school for kids, who at that time was almost as old as I was. And there were sections in Chicago that I was a little bit nervous about going into. But this program has a tremendous reputation, and they don't do it at a city pace. They do it systemically, one neighborhood first, see how effective it is, next neighborhood. It's a good, practical way of really impacting violence. So, I commend the effort, and I know the results were in Chicago because I still have friends that are still there. So, I'm just anxious to waiting for us to get this off the ground and running.
Thank you.
Chairman.
Ma'am.
Mike, I don't have any questions. I just have comments. Thank you, Chantel, for the presentation today, and I have a word of thanks for this board. I wanted to just say thank you. Thank you for getting behind the process relative to this gun and gang violence that's transpiring here in the county. I appreciate the resolution, the funding, and this initiative. It's going to be really important. On yesterday, I was glad that we had Mayor Pro Tem DeeDee Adams, the Public Safety Chair for the city, Council Member James Taylor, and Robert Clark, and then at CPO as well. So, knowing that we have all these partners surrounding us, again, this is something new, and I'm embracing it. I will continue to say that we no longer can enforce our way out of this. I was glad to have Sheriff Kimbrough or the Sheriff's Department's representative and Chief of Police representative there as well. But again, we were looking for something else different, and hopefully, that assessment will provide that for us. But again, my sentiments are thank you, thank you, thank you.
And Deputy County Manager Chantel Robinson, thank you very much for a very good report. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
The 21st of October, we're going to have another meeting of this board. We're having a briefing today. It is the second briefing for that particular date, and we'll turn the meeting over to Dudley Watts, who'll find out what is on the 27 agenda report.
Very good. We've been at it about an hour. Do you want to take a short recess, or do you want to plow on through? We probably can get through it fairly quickly, but I'll leave it up to the board.
How would you like to do it? Chairman Martin says go.
All right. We will do that. So, basically, the other items, we have finalized the agenda for the October 21st meeting, and a matter did come up for closed session, since I sent out my memo this morning, so I apologize, but I do have one short closed-session item regarding property. So, go ahead and dive into the agenda, and Chris Murphy is there at the podium. He's going to review very quickly for us the two planning items.
I believe Ashley's going to pull up the slideshow, but I may just kind of even wing it even further than that to keep it brief. The first case is F-1605. It's approximately 17 acres, and it's a proposal to go from AG to RS20S for a 28-lot subdivision. The zoning being requested, there is some similar zoning in the area if we go to the That's okay. As we're experiencing technical difficulty, actually, if you go to the third slide, yeah, you'll see that the zoning pattern, this existing AG, but there is some existing RS30 and RS20 in the area. If you go to the next slide, this is just the subject property identified on the aerial photo. If you go to the next slide, these images are just images taken from Stanleyville Drive, subject property to the left there. I believe that's Montlou Street, which is on the right, across from the zoning sign. If you go to the next image, we can just kind of zip through these. That's just the subject property. That's looking west on Stanleyville Drive. The site is to the right. If you go to the next one, and this is just looking into the site again, across from Montlou Drive. This is the area plan map. It is in the Forsyth County Rural Growth Management Area. It's also in the Town of Rural Hall Plan, and the Forsyth County Plan just recommends residential. The Rural Hall Plan recommends no more than eight units to the acre, which this project more than adheres to both of those. If we go to the next slide, this is what the proposed development would look like. It does propose to provide a subconnection to the southeast and a subconnection to the northeast. If you go to the next image, the request would permit large-lot development and a variety of homeownership opportunities in GMA 5. The request does propose a density of less than two units per acre, includes internal sidewalks and open space throughout the development. Legacy 2030 does recommend making new suburban neighborhoods pedestrian and bike-friendly with interconnected street networks that provide sidewalks and bike lanes. If you go to the next image, this item was heard at the September 9th Planning Board public hearing. No speaker spoke in opposition. The Planning Board did recommend unanimously to recommend approval of this request, and the plan does meet UDO requirements. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments? Not a one. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next item, I'm not sure County Manager wants to introduce it, or I will. It's F-1607. It's another rezoning request. It's a request of Robin Hood Baptist Church. It's about a five-acre site on the south side of Robin Hood Road between Lindell and Oliver Church Road, and they are requesting to rezone from IP to GBS. This is the legacy map. You'll see it's shown in the suburban growth management area, but on the edge of an activity center. If you would go to the next slide. This is a subject property. It's part of the Robin Hood Baptist Church campus, and that's why it is zoned IP and in the area plan recommended for institutional, but it is located just directly west of a project that the commissioners approved approximately a year ago for a shopping center and multifamily project. You could go to the next image. This is the subject property shown, highlighted in yellow on the aerial photo, again, behind Robin Hood Baptist. I'm sorry, go ahead. This is a transmission tower that's on the Robin Hood Baptist campus. The subject property is just behind this image, behind the transmission tower. You go to the next image. This is looking west on Robin Hood at the intersection with Meadowlark. The subject property would be to the left, kind of off back to your... To the background in this image. You go to the next slide. This is the subject property shown on the West Suburban Area Plan. Again, the area plan recommendation is for this to remain institutional, public IP zoning, but that was a recognition of the existing zoning, or excuse me, the existing ownership of the property being owned by the church. It is shown in an activity center, and it is adjacent to the property that the county approved approximately a year ago. So, it is consistent with the area plan in that it is in an activity center, and activity centers should be more intense in development than the surrounding areas. If you go to the next image. This is the site plan. It's just an extension of the multifamily on the western side of that mixed-use project. They're proposing two three-story walk-up buildings with a parking in front of it. If you'll go to the next image, that's what the design, proposed design of the building would be. If you go to the next image, this is located within the Robin Hood Village Activity Center. It is adjacent to existing GBS zoning approved for multifamily apartments and a commercial shopping center. The request is not expected to significantly affect nearby traffic operations. And again, this item was heard by the Planning Board at their September 9th public hearing. There were no speakers in opposition, and the Planning Board did recommend unanimously to recommend approval to the commissioners, and the site plan does meet UDO requirements. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions on this case.
Comments or questions? All right. You did a good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate you being here. I know you had some conflicts this afternoon, so very good. All right. Continue with the agenda. Item 3 is a public hearing on proposed ordinance to rename a segment of Marydale Drive within the unincorporated area of Forsyth County, Mary Valley Lane. You've got the associated ordinance. Matthew Hamby reviewed that. He's here if you have any questions.
Questions?
All right. Very good. Item 4 is a resolution recognizing October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and recognizing the efforts of Bridges to Hope Family Justice Center of Forsyth County. DeWanna Hamlin and I think some representatives from the Family Justice Center will be here next Thursday to accept the...
Comments or questions?
Very good. Item 5 is a resolution redefining the Electoral Districts for the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners. Gordon Watkins has presented this on a number of occasions, he's obviously here if you have any questions.
Questions?
Okay. All right. Item 6 for approval of the minutes, and they...
They were sent out today.
Sent out today. Very good. All right. Thank you. Item 7 is an amendment to the Pandemic Response Special Revenue Fund. It appropriates $16,59,464 for additional emergency rental assistance program assistance. Kyle Wolf reviewed that, but Chantel's here, or Kyle's here if you've got any questions as well.
Questions?
All right. Item 8 is an amendment to the Fiscal Year 2021/2022 Budget Ordinance. It appropriates fund balance resulting from fiscal year 2020/2021 sales tax revenue for the Forsyth County Schools. for the Forsyth County Schools. Ms. McManus and the CFO for the schools were supposed to be here. They were going to participate remotely, and we began to have some technical issues, and it just did not work. But she is committed to be here next Thursday to get those questions answered.
Good.
Thank you. Agenda item 9 is an amendment to the 2016 Schools Capital Projects Ordinance for the North Carolina Department of Transportation, NC DOT road widening project at Lewisville Middle School. Adam Fernbach reviewed that. Questions? Okay. All right. Item 10 is resolution authorizing submission of an application to the North Carolina Department of Transportation to apply for and accept if awarded a 2021, 2022 Rural Operating Assistance, ROAP grant, also an EDTAP, Edible and Disabled Transportation Assistance Program Fund, and EMPL, and Rural General Public Transportation Program Grant.
Questions or comments?
You got some.
All right.
Very good. Agenda item 11 is resolution authorizing a second amendment to an agreement with AFCON Incorporated to provide additional environmental assessment services for Taxi Wayne Lima Apron Paving Lighting Project Design Build Services at Spencer Airlines Airport. Mark Davidson's here if you've got questions.
Comments?
All right. Item 12 is resolution selecting and authorizing execution agreement with Barr Construction Company Incorporated to act as design builder to provide design and pre-construction services for the Blues Lake Park project.
Questions?
Okay. All right. Thank you. You've got three property matters, and Chelsea Swaim handled those well last Thursday. She's here if you've got questions. You've got a resolution authorizing the lease agreement between Forsyth County and Collidium for the lease of county-owned property at 400 West Haynes Mill Road. You've got a resolution authorizing the execution of a lease agreement between Forsyth County and the state of North Carolina for two properties, one at 5580 Sturmer Park and 5560 Sturmer Park Circle.
I'd like to hear from Chelsea. Questions?
All right. Thank you. You've got one appointment to the Partners Board of Directors for a three-year term to kind of get that governing board situated. And then you've got items 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21, or refunds by the tax assessor or collector in the amounts as shown. And he's here if you have any questions.
You know, you've gone through this, three quarters of this whole thing in less than 10 minutes. This is going to be a great meeting this time.
I saw Dr. Martin told me to carry on, and so we did what we needed to do. So you've got the reports there, and those are a bunch of tax collector assessor reports for refunds 22 through 26. And then we do have an added item 27, which was briefed as a discussion item last Thursday. We carried it over. It is a resolution authorizing execution of agreement between Forsyth County Board of Elections and the Resource Company Incorporated for temporary employment services for the one-stop early voting and elections response at the Board of Elections. So we've added that.
Any questions or comments?
Well, that's the one item, that's the one item I probably had a couple of questions about.
Okay.
And partly because we didn't spend a whole bunch of time on it, and I, I'd actually, I have to admit, I didn't read it very carefully either. Is this, do we, have we worked with these folks? Are they doing, are they working for us now? I just, I had a misunderstanding of kind of how that, all the staffing took place, or now currently takes place. I guess I want, what I want to know is, what's kind of the difference between the way we do, have done things kind of in the immediate past, and is this a new proposal, or it's just a, it's a local contractor that's, that we've been using contractors before, and this is a new one?
Right. Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Commissioners. To answer your question, so we have had a prior relationship with this company. We have been using a temporary service agency for the staffing of our early voting sites for at least the past eight years.
Okay. That's what.
And this is the company that we have been using up until that time.
Okay. Thank you. I just, I didn't get, I didn't get it last week. I got it.
Tim, we're glad you're here. At least I had a chance to speak. That's good. Thank you.
I have one question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Don't go.
Tim, have you had a chance to get a firm commitment from the state on approving the new precincts that you recommended?
Right. And I did receive your email the other day. I did respond to it. So I followed up with the state board. They're just waiting for their data team to review the shape files, the maps of those precinct changes. And once they reviewed the data points and then shared their recommendations to the executive director, she'll then sign off on it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Kaplan reminds, we were headed for adjournment and a closed session. Mr. Manager.
I was going to ask, before we do that, I think I saw enough head nods to add the aircraft donation into this agenda. Everybody here, okay, I saw, see that. Very good. We will take care of that.
Got 100%.
And then we'll, we'll continue to work on, I think I heard some support for making some modifications to some pickleball courts. We'll work on that and perhaps get that in that next cycle. So.
Sounds good.
Very good. So unless there's anything else, closed session motion?
Right ahead.
All right. Need to ask the board to consider a motion to go into closed session to discuss a matter to establish or to instruct the public body staff in negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price or the material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease pursuant to general statute 143, 31811A5. And since there's no other business to come before the board at this meeting, following closed session, the meeting will be adjourned.
Commissioner Kaplan and Manager Watts, we have a motion for adjournment. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, we adjourn.